Well, good evening. Good evening. Ah, there you go. Thank you. Today is May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. You're part of the six o'clock county commissioner meeting. And it's always good to look out in the room and see a lot of folks here. Uh, and so we're glad that you're here today. We hope that you take something good out of today's meeting. Uh, we're glad that you're part of our evening this evening. It's been the tradition of this board and boards all across the nation. We do a couple of things before we begin official proceedings. We uh, we'll have a pledge of allegiance and then we'll also have what's called a solemnizing prayer. As our chaplain makes his way forward, a solemnizing prayer by definition isn't for you. It's for us. Uh, the commissioners have a lot to study during the week or during the weeks. And so we are trying to make decisions that's in the best interest of the community. And so we seek wisdom and we're not ashamed of that. And so we'll ask our chaplain to come forward and ask for wisdom on but on our behalf. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Commissioners, let's pray. Lord, we're privileged to be here tonight, Lord, and we're privileged to have our county commissioners who serve. We thank you, Lord, for the work they do, Lord. We thank for the hours preparation they put in for this meeting tonight. And we pray you give them the wisdom they need, blessings upon them tonight, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, invincible of liberty and justice for all.
There's the Marines. Chaplain Taylor, as always, thank you for being with us. We appreciate your time and your service to our county. I don't think I have any additions to the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or delete? All right, then, do we have a motion to approve the agendas provided to us? All right, and a second, all in favor say aye. And then we have the consent agenda before us. Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. All right. I would like to welcome some folks today from the county. Alan Hegler, would you stand? Alan, where's Alan? Alan and also Chief Edwards. Chief Edwards and there he is. And Aaron Poplin. All right, so these, these folks are part of a leadership program that the county manager is. Yes. Oh, okay. You're, you're welcome to do anything you want, sir. Well, these guys are going through the manager's leadership program. Every, every couple of weeks, we have a county manager, our county commissioner meeting. Uh, they actually are required to attend one of these. Aaron's here a lot and our, our deputies and EMS are here a lot too. But we wanted to welcome you and thank you for being here. And thank you for working on your leadership skills for the betterment of the community. So thanks, thanks for being here. All right, we've got some special recognition tonight. And it's probably the most that I've seen since I've been here. So commissioners, if y'all want to join out front, we'll get started on this. All right. So I'm gonna just speak louder, I'll get you. All right. We have Wild Bill come up here today. So I'm not really sure what they told Wild Bill today to come up here. But we're to honor you today, Mr. Wild Bill. We've got some great folks in our, our county. And, uh, you know, our county is unique and great because of the people. And you're one of the, well, you're one of the people that make our county so great. Your institution, uh, in the whole county. People always know about Wild Bill, know about his banquets. As Greg said, knows about his sausage. He's probably got some downstairs if you want some. And, uh, but we, we wanted to thank you for all of your years of service to the county, to your country, to the youth. We know that you had your last JROTC banquet this year. And so we wanted to do something special for you. And so, um, let me read this proclamation. Proclamation recognizing the service of William Wild Bill Albert Corrigan Jr. Whereas Wild Bill Albert Corrigan Jr., a lifetime resident of Rowan County, was born May eighteenth, nineteen twenty-nine in Chana Grove, North Carolina, and has farmed Rowan County for most of his life. And whereas Wild Bill served in the United States Army from nineteen fifty-five to nineteen fifty-seven, was stationed at Fort Jackson, South Carolina, and Fort Myers, Virginia. And whereas Wild Bill is currently the longest-serving American Legion commander in the state of North Carolina, serving as the commander of the Free Seymour American Legion Post one eighty-five in Chana Grove since nineteen seventy-nine. And whereas Wild Bill has been a strong supporter of the South Rowan Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, JROTC, and the Future Farmers of America, FFA programs, including organizing and supporting the South Rowan JROTC banquets since the early nineteen eighties. And whereas upon finding out that, finding out the nationwide JROTC program was being discontinued in nineteen ninety, Wild Bill was the driving force behind lobbying, lobbying the United States Congress to save the program. And whereas understand the importance of the JROTC program to the development of our future military leaders, Wild Bill founded the Wild Bill JROTC Scholarship in nineteen ninety, which provides funding to well-deserving JROTC students and has raised over one hundred thousand dollars for this fund. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners gives a sincere thanks to Wild Bill's service and sacrifice to our nation, our county, and our youth. Make that in form of a motion. Aye. A lot of people don't know that when the JROTC program was supposed to be discontinued by Congress, Wild Bill went up to Washington himself, lobbied William Congressman Hefner. And, uh, my understanding is he pretty much saved the whole program himself. But I'm sure he's a little more modest than that nationwide. So he's a, he's been, he's been a great, a great person for us. And I'm sure the other commissioners would like to say something.
Now, I'm your only girlfriend, right? He, the first time we met, he said, I'm gonna add you to my girlfriend list. And I said, list? What's that all about? But no, we won't tell, no. But I just want to say thank you because I met a kid that came to your county and said, you need to go meet you. And so I did. And I just want to say thank you for all of your assistance that you've given to me personally, but especially for the people of this county and this nation, all the things that you have done. Thank you.
Well, Bill, um, Mike and our county manager came up with this idea a couple of years ago. We had these county coins minted. Uh, some call them a challenge coin. It has the seal of Rowan County on one side. We only have a few of these. We don't give them out like candy. We give them out purposefully and sparingly. Can't eat it anyway. No, you can't. Uh, this is good for one pound of Corrigan sausage, though, I hear. Yeah. So we give these to folks that we think have really made a difference in Rowan County. In fact, Jim and I were up in Washington DC a couple of years ago. And, uh, we were invited by the girls softball team who won our world championship. And we actually got to hand one of these to the President of the United States. So, uh, you're both in good company. So we want this to you as well as a keepsake. And just say thank you for all your years of great service to this community, okay?
Um, you know, Greg and Judy and I ran at the same time, a little over eight years ago. And, uh, I was, uh, well, I've always been ignorant of some subjects. But politics was one of the things I was pretty ignorant about, trying to get elected, as most people are, that are working and, you know, don't have time to follow them a lot of times. But anyway, uh, we were sitting down and talking and this guy said, uh, it was spring of the year and he said, uh, now you're going to South Rowan High School, aren't you? I said, well, for what? And he said, well, Wild Bill's having his R O J, uh, J R O T C junior program down there. And I said, what's a Wild Bill? Just go down there, you'll find out what a Wild Bill is. He said, you won't get elected to anything in this county unless Wild Bill approves. So that was, that was my first introduction to Wild Bill. And, uh, he has lived up to his reputation as far as I'm concerned. Bill, thank you so much for your years of service. And it's been a pleasure to be in your, uh, command at, at some time.
All right, April, are you here for the, oh, you got, oh yeah, okay, good.
All right, Bill, we're gonna get a picture with you, okay?
Freezer comrade, I got a motto I'd like to tell everybody. We have good teenagers. It's us as parents to punish them when they do something wrong. They're not gonna be perfect, neither was we. I got my tail chopped up many times and I deserve everyone to God. My motto is no drugs, dope, and no alcohol. Date, have fun, but don't start a family till you're married. And comrades, I encourage you, teach all our young folk no drugs and no alcohol. I care. Thank you all for the recognition tonight. You're always precious. I'm sure I don't have to make the, like, y'all have to. You're gonna do a good job.
Bill, and we don't, we don't have a meeting Thursday, but something's happening Thursday. And it's your ninety-fourth birthday, is that correct?
Ninety-four, yes.
Can we take a minute here, let Greg lead us and happy birthday to you?
Y'all wanna sing happy birthday? Y'all know that song? All right, ready? Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Wild Bill. Happy birthday to you.
You know, uh, the longer I stay in politics, the smaller the group friends that I have, we'll admit it. But it is a pleasure for me tonight to, uh, present this proclamation to a gentleman that I've known twenty-five years, I guess. Vernon Walters, would you come up here, please? Vernon has worked with the Children's Home and the Association for, what'd you say, twenty-five years? Twenty-four years? Well, maybe I have only known him twenty-three years. But tonight we'd like to honor him and let, in a small way, let him know how much we think, think of him and all the great work he has done. Proclamation recognizing Vernon Walters for outstanding community contributions. Whereas the Rowan County Board of Commissioners wish to celebrate outstanding community members and their accomplishments and considers Vernon Walters to be a valued community member worthy of recognition. And whereas Vernon Walters has committed his life to serving the community in order to help shape the lives of young people in Rowan County and surrounding areas and has worked to increase the services and continuum of care provided to the community. And whereas Vernon Walters has served as the President and Chief Executive Officer of the American Children's Home, the Executive Director of Sykes, Orchard Home for Boys, and most recently as the President and Chief Executive Officer of Nazareth Child and Family Connection, based in Rockwell, North Carolina, for twenty-four years. And whereas Vernon Walters has provided the leadership to include the residential level-two services, day treatment services, and mental health and substance abuse counseling in the agency's array of services, and has opened locations in Salisbury, Albemarle, Lexington, and established the infrastructure needed to ensure Nazareth obtained and maintains accreditation through the Council of Accredit, on accreditation. And whereas Nazareth Children and Family Connection was founded in nineteen oh-six and currently provides for the forty to, uh, forty to fifty residents at any given time, sheltering young people, teaching life skills, and helping youth to develop into successful, contributing members of society. And whereas the mission statement of Nazareth Children and Family Connection is to provide the highest quality of service with a commitment to excellence while empowering youth and families in developing solutions that ensure successful outcomes. And Vernon Walters wholly embodies that mission. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissions recognizes the outstanding community service provided by Vernon Walters throughout his career, not only in Rowan County, but across the state of North Carolina, and urges all citizens to join in. And we urge all citizens to join in congratulating Vernon Walters on an outstanding career with Nazareth Child and Family Connection. Your work is appreciated by the community and the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your dedicated service and wishes you a joyful retirement.
Can you come up here and add to the beauty of our group right here?
All right, do we have our nine-one-one folks here? Okay. Well, we got a couple of things for y'all. Yeah, y'all come on up here, let's slide down. All right, Jim, uh, for Vernon's, uh, you make that in form of a motion?
I make that in the form of a motion.
All right, I second, all in favor say aye. Aye, all right. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So, uh, as Jim would say, the older he gets, the more he is, uh, uh, he, in, in, interested that our nine-one-one communications center is operating at peak condition, right, Jim?
That's right.
Right.
You never know.
You never know when we're gonna, uh, when we're gonna need it. And so I don't know if you guys know this, uh, but this year, the Rowan County nine-one-one communications center was named as the twenty-twenty-three Commu, Communication Center of the Universe for the whole year. It was the universe, wasn't it? I think we misspelled it, but I think it's universe. But, um, you know, a few of us, well, I think all of us at some time have walked in and spent time in the center and just seen what you guys do. Um, and just how amazing it is, you're, you're, you're juggling artists is what, juggling all the calls and the emergencies, keeping a level head, giving good advice, following the systems, making the calls, connecting calls, and, uh, get, getting folks out, whether it's fire, police, emergency. And so, um, I, I, I don't think I could do it. Um, but we appreciate you guys and we would like to offer up and present you this proclamation. Whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the Rowan County nine-one-one communications center is the single vital link between first responders and persons seeking immediate relief during an emergency. And whereas the dispatchers in the Rowan County nine-one-one communications center are tasked with not only assessing critical and emergency situations, but efficiently dispatching the appropriate response to each caller's need. Whereas Rowan County nine-one-one communications center contributes substantially to the mitigation of crime, apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and overall safety and welfare of our community by responding to twenty-five thousand three hundred and nineteen emergency medical services calls, twenty-six thousand eight hundred and fifty-one fire calls, and one hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-five law enforcement calls in two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the Rowan County Board of Commissioners is committed to celebrating and honoring the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our county and citizens safe. And we would like to thank the dispatchers and other staff of the nine-one-one communications center for their unwavering dedication to the safety of the community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Rowan County Board of Commissioners would like to congratulate and recognize the Rowan County nine-one-one communications center dispatchers and staff for being awarded the twenty-twenty-three Communications Center of the Year Award from the North Carolina Chapter of the National Emergency Member Association. This the fifteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three. So we'd like to present this to you with our great thanks.
Now, we, uh, they work very hard in the comm center. I'm just wanting to just to be the chief over everything, but they, uh, they do a lot for the county. A lot of unsung, unsung things going in that comm center that you don't know about. We try to take care of everybody we can and try to get the best service we can for all the citizens of the county.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We've got another one. Uh, this is, uh, May twenty-one through twenty-seven is Emergency Medical Services Week. Um, and so I want to read this proclamation for our folks in medical services and say thank you to you. Whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service and the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. Whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first through twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the EMS strong theme. This is EMS caring for our communities and encourages the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This the fifteenth day of May, two thousand and twenty-three. And so I make that in the form of a motion. All right, Judy, second. Um, all in favor say aye. Aye. Chief?
Well, thank you again for this, for this proclamation. Now, they, these are the people that the Reverend Mr. wrote. Uh, when you call nine-one-one, if you have a medical emergency, this is who comes out. We was only able to bring one crew up here tonight, but, uh, usually we have nine to ten, depending on hour of the day. So a lot of dedicated people out there. Really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. We've been working closely with all you guys. Now, it seems like when COVID started, we became closer friends and allies. Um, but we really appreciate, um, and I, I usually, I'm kidding with Jim about this, but the older we get, the more we think about these things. And so we really value what you do and appreciate my office. I s, I hear ambulances going up and down the road all the time. And it seems like I stop and say a quick prayer and pray for you guys, your wisdom and your skills to come in clear and, um, and whoever is with you, that they'll arrive safely in recovery. So we can't do, uh, the county without you guys. And so we're just grateful. So, uh, thank you for what you do for us and all of our citizens. Thank you. Chaplain Taylor, would you join us up here? You need to pray this meeting speeds up.
Chaplain Taylor. Whereas the Shield of Badge with Prayer Program works to affirm the commitment of Rowan County law enforcement officers and encourages citizen awareness and appreciation for these officers. Whereas the program invites citizens to commit to pray for an officer every day for one year and send birthday cards and notes of thanks to these officers. And whereas through the And whereas, through the generosity of individuals, businesses, and churches that have donated services and fundraisers, 1,500 Bibles, 4,000 Shield of Badge Bible Promise books, and 11,200 New Testaments have been purchased to be given away. And whereas, the Shield of Badge with Prayer Program began in 1995 in Rowan County by Chaplain Michael Taylor and has begun to expand statewide, reaching out to other counties, municipalities, colleges, hospitals, correctional facilities, 911 communicators, probation officers, animal control officers, state highway patrol troopers, fire departments, clerk of court, employees, magistrates, judges, district attorney offices, county commissioners, sheriffs, first responders, U Medical, EMS attorneys. And whereas, through the dedication and travels of Chaplain Taylor, counties from across the state are receiving encouragement and training for chaplains. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners the month of May as Shield of Badge Awareness Month, this 15th day of May. Thank you. That's made in the form of a motion.
I wonder if all the law enforcement officers would stand at this time? All our law enforcement officers here here tonight, would you, would you stand? That, that's what this is all about. We need to pray for them. Any officer that retires that hadn't been wounded, shot at, or something even give their lives for, they can thank God, make it through their career without being hurt. And that's what this program is about, is to pray for officers. We appreciate what they do. It's simple. Everybody can pray. It's important we pray for them, and I'm glad to be able to do what I do. It's all because of them, that's what it's about.
I agree with the chaplain. I mean, this is a very hard time in the country right now for law enforcement. We've got people leaving daily. Folks aren't coming in. I don't know where we're gonna be in a few years. And I think all of us that, that go out down the road, we feel the prayers. We've all had situations where we're thinking, wow, had to be a prayer involved in that, or we wouldn't be here. And I know that we got our folks in here, they're in law enforcement, and I think might be some retired law enforcement in here. And we're, we're thankful every day for this program that you put together. But I think that we know that, really the only thing that ever gets done is, is what's done through prayer. So, we appreciate you and the program that you put together. Yep, we have a motion. All second. All in favor say aye. We've got one more. Would our law enforcement folks please come forward? All of our law enforcement folks? Come on here in the middle. All right, so this, this is Law Enforcement Week. We're kicking off this week. And so, I want to read a proclamation for our law enforcement folks here, not only in the county, but our municipalities and across our state and nation as well. But for our Rowan County folks here with us today, whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a presidential proclamation set aside May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 15th through the 21st as National Police Week. Whereas, the number, the members of our law enforcement agencies in Rowan County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of all of our citizens. Whereas, it's important that our citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agencies. Whereas, members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas, law enforcement officers, past and present, have faithfully and lawfully rendered a dedicated service to this county and have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2023 as Law Enforcement Week. Now therefore, be it further proclaimed that the Rowan County Board of Commissioners calls upon its citizens of Rowan County to observe May 17th, 2023 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. This, the 15th day of May, 2023. Make that in the form of a motion. Second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Our highest ranking law enforcement officer in the county is here with us. A few words.
Yeah, we want to thank the commission for this. If I've learned one thing since being sheriff in December, that Rowan County is extremely fortunate to have the men and women that work for them, and not just the sheriffs, but all emergency services. It's a team effort from fire to EMS to law enforcement, from communications that work together well, and we do this job together. And I think Rowan County is just, I don't think they truly understand how blessed we are to have such good public service. It's, people that ask, is it hard to be sheriff? I said, with the people that I have and that I get to work with, it's the best job a sheriff, a person can have. We have great personnel, and we're only as successful as the people that we have employed. And the county commission has been very supportive of us, and we thank you for that.
All right, last picture. Y'all, y'all smash in here. Thank you for your patience through that. That's unusual that we have that many, but certainly an honor tonight to have all of our special guests with us. We'll move on to the next part of our agenda. Item number three, public comment. So, we have, first off, Kenny Harden is first. Kenny, welcome. Thanks for being with us.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Turn it a little more toward you, Kenny.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Well, I gave the clerk some handouts for you. And first of all, I'll just preface it by saying my intention here tonight is not to challenge anyone, embarrass anyone. What I wanted to do is I came here, because I'm a little disappointed. I stood here a year ago. I'm a little excited, but a year later, I'm just a little bit disappointed with some things that have occurred out at the West End Plaza. So, I just wanted to take a few minutes, and I hope not to exceed my three minutes. But I am a disabled veteran. I served honorably for six years in the United States Air Force. I served my community honorably for 30 years after I got out of the Air Force. I have received the challenge coins that you gave out tonight. I've received one from the county commission. I've received one from Carl Ford, from Freightliner. I've probably got a dozen of those coins, because I do fight and advocate, and I work hard for my community. I work hard for veterans, and that's why I'm here tonight. I've only accepted two awards in 30 years. One was the Dr. Martin Luther King Humanitarian Award, given by the VA. The other was induction into the North Carolina Military Veterans Hall of Fame. I accepted those two because they were given by and about military and veterans. But in 2021, I received unanimous approval from you all to open up a Veteran Social Center out at the West End Plaza, and we have been very successful in that year. We have not only taken that facility recognition statewide, countrywide, but we are all in eight countries. Also, we have about 28,000 followers that follow us on social media. We do a lot of outreach. We've just done a lot of remarkable things in the short year that we have been open. Our mission that I stood here and asked you for and talked to you about was to create a safe space for veterans, a relaxing place for veterans that might have mental health challenges, mental health concerns like PTSD, traumatic brain injury, depression. That safe space has been violated. And the reason it's been violated is there seems to be a lot of things that are going on out at the West End Plaza that maybe y'all are not aware of. So, I just wanted to give you all some handouts, and I'll be more than happy to leave some for the attendees here tonight. Again, not to embarrass anybody, but there are some serious things that are going on out at the West End.
Mr. Harden, you've got 20 seconds.
Okay, these are documented things, and I'm pretty sure I would be cut off. But these are some documented things that are going on. But instead of talking to me, the county manager has tried to discredit me, my character, and pune my character, assassinate my character, instead of talking to me. All I've asked is for us to be treated fairly. You have it in your hand. I think there's some things that y'all really need to look at at the West End Plaza. Veterans deserve better.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Harden. Next, we have Cleo Jordan. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Give me if I'm nervous, but I don't like crowds.
Well, we are too.
All right. My name is Cleo Jordan. I'm a disabled Vietnam Air veteran with PTSD, TBI, and herbicide exposure. I see a psychologist, I see a psychiatrist, three times, well, about every three months. But the best therapy that I've found is the Veteran Social Center. Where I can come in and mingle with my fellow vets, laugh and joke and have fun, you know. We never have any problems. I've not seen, I'm a volunteer also. So, I'm a get on the Veteran Social Officer, Service Officer in the mall. About four or five years ago, I went there to put in some claims. I think Gary was the officer in charge then. He helped me out quite a bit, but he retired. So, the next gentleman that took over that position, I was still trying to get my claims in, but he talked more about himself than helping me. I needed somebody to stand up and fight for me. So, this happened a couple of times, and that's, that's the truth. His demeanor was not good. I got bad vibes. And so, I didn't ever go back. I went and got me a lawyer. Like I said, I needed someone to fight for me. As far as the mall goes, there's homeless people inside and outside of the mall. There've been a few that's tried to enter the Veteran Social Center. They've been drinking. We've had to turn them around. There is no security. I'm not noticing the security. I seen a policeman walk through there, and it's one time in a year. So, and it's a whole lot going on that y'all probably don't know, but these things are happening.
Mr. Jordan, thank you. Appreciate you being here. Bernie Sahadi? Sahadi? How could I, how could I forget that? Well, welcome.
Thank you very much. Let me introduce myself. My name is Bernie Sahadi. I'm a resident of Rowan County for eight years now. And I want to put this forth to you. I am the president of the Rowan County Veterans Council. And I also want to refute to what has just been said about RVSO. When this came to light, I was very disturbed. And I want to make sure everybody here understands something. Our current VSO has approximately 130 to 115 touch times to veterans every single Tuesday. I have been interacting with him for the last two and a half years and have found him to be 100% professional, and in fact, eager to help every veteran that wants and seeks help. Just read this document that I was given, and I want to dispute everything, but I also want to do this. I'd like to make myself available to any, anybody on this board, ask me anything you'd like about my real experiences with RVSO. My last and final comment is valuable. Is extremely valuable. I am a 100% disabled veteran, and I'm wearing this ball cap for a reason, so you can see how I am disabled. That was in Iraq. Didn't fall down, I didn't trip. I was targeted by the enemy. My injuries are real and sincere, and thanks to our RVSO, RVA recognizes that. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bernie. All right, next is, is it Thomas Pierce? Is that right?
Yes.
All right, I'm sorry. Well, yeah, come on. Yeah, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Yes.
I'll announce my name. My name is Thomas Sparks Pierce Jr., okay? I'm originally from Wilkes County, Browardale County where I was born. And then I grew up, went in the military, stayed 30 years, and then had other jobs and everything, and had three good retirements, and still working. And I'm in my mid-80s, and I help Veterans Center over here. I volunteer to help them over there, just to help other families and men, the armed forces comrades, you know. But anyway, this is in reference to a conflict that I had confronting with an individual at the Veteran Center, okay? At the VA Center. And if you don't mind, I'd like to read this to you, okay? All right, on, approximately March 8, 2023, I took a red velvet cake down to one of the female employees named Deanna, Deanna, which is D, at the Veteran Service Office. I wasn't working, she wasn't working that day, so I left the cake for her. The next day, I went down and went back to their office to see if she had received the cake, and they asked her if she enjoyed it. The administrative secretary, who sits at the window, was rude and unprofessional to me. She humiliated, humiliated me and talked down to me, saying I had violated a county policy by baking a cake. I found out later that there's no such thing as a policy there. Anyway, she didn't, she had, she didn't have to insert herself into my discussion. I wasn't even talking to that lady. She didn't, well, anyway, she didn't have humility to even say, or like the cake. I bake cakes and pies, anything I want, and I bake them for the veterans, and they enjoy them. And it was just a gesture I made. But to, but to me, the lady shouldn't have, I wasn't talking to her, she shouldn't have interrupted. Even though she is a secretary, I was talking to this lady privately. She didn't have the courtesy to, to be quiet while I was talking. And that's the reason I wanted to let you be aware of that, okay?
Thank you for being here. Next is Carolyn Logan. Welcome, we're glad you're here.
I'm Carolyn Logan and I also volunteer at the Veteran's Social Center. And I thank Tom for coming up. We love Tom. Tom makes us cakes, makes us banana puddings and everything. When Tom went to the Veteran's Social Office that day and he came back, he is not even telling the full story. He came back with tears in his ass. He was so humiliated. But he's not the first person that has done that. I've had people that come into the Veteran's Social Center asking me, what is going on down there? They've gone to for help, for claims, and this man who said he's disputing stuff, he's not there. Because where is he at when the people are coming saying that they're coming for help for claims? That they've had, one woman said that her husband had served, she didn't know what to do. She said, ma'am, they were so rude to me. She said, I'm, I'm leaving. She was from out of town. So we've had other people to come in and say how they've been treated down there. So I don't understand this man saying he's going to dispute this because he's not there all the time. Where is he at when these people are coming to us? People in the mall, yeah, they, they don't all kind of stuff in the mall at the West End Plaza. We've come in, people in the back of the plaza having oral sex in the car. It's all kind of stuff going on in there. But besides that, because that's their business, if y'all don't handle it, I can't handle, I can ignore them. I don't care about nobody else's sex. But what I do care about, my dad was a veteran. He fought in the Korean War. You know, if my dad and the man that y'all see, y'all call Wild Bill up here, nice man, nice, I don't know, but I can see that y'all care about him. How would y'all feel if he came to y'all, said he went to the Veteran's Social Office, he came back with tears in his ass because he was humiliated? These people fought for our country and they deserve better. These veterans, and if y'all, if y'all know about it and y'all not doing anything about it, then I'm a part of the job. Because y'all said at the beginning of this thing, how y'all had them praying for God. See, God don't like ugly. Either you, if you're going to pray for God, you gotta put some works behind it. And if you know somebody's mistreating these veterans, if you know they're being humiliated, that somebody needs to step up and do something about it. I don't care if it's your friend, I don't care if it's your opponent, I don't care who it is. If my sister or my brother wrong, then I'm going to tell them they're wrong. This, this Tom, eighty something, eighty-five years old. Tom bring cakes, he bring, I want another banana pudding too, Tom. He makes us banana puddings. He, he, he's a veteran, but he loves the other veterans. He's very giving. And for him and any other veteran to go down there and be humiliated, that's bad. That's not good. Do y'all know what they, do y'all even understand? Then on Veterans Day, you'll be out there like, oh, we love the veterans. Don't act like you love them. I can't hear what you're saying, but seeing what you're doing. Don't act like we all for veterans, we want to do this and that for veterans. But when you know somebody's mistreating veterans, nobody has to step up.
You've got twenty seconds.
Okay. And like I said, if you know that they're doing this, if you're not going to do anything about it, if you're not going to put any work, proud about work is dead. If you're not going to put any work behind it, stop getting up here saying you're praying for God. That's hypocritical.
Thank you, Ms. Logan. It's good to have you with us. All right, I think, I think that's it. All right, we'll move on to item number three and that is our aviation, I'm sorry, for Aviation Management Consultant Group. Valerie, if you're here, come on forward. Valerie, welcome.
Good evening. So I believe we have AMCG, the gentleman and young lady that were here last week as well via Zoom from Denver, or if they're somewhere else. This is the same presentation as last week. The main item to look at is the airport rent study. AMCG has found that our airport is, in some instances, one hundred and forty-three percent lower than we technically should be. One of the things we agree to as recipients of FAA money and as the airport sponsor is that we will act in a manner that makes the airport as financially independent as possible. That is something we agree to in grants and when we're not charging rates and fees that we should be, we are not meeting that expectation.
Go ahead.
I'm here to ask for, the suggestion was to make at least a fifty percent increase in our first year based on these rates and fees. It does impact the annual leases first. As we move through the rest of the leases, each of the FBO or larger Hager leases do come back in front of you. The annual leases are the only ones that renew usually on an annual basis without having to come back in front of the board each time. In the five years that I know of, there has not been a rate increase. And I looked back at all of the documents I can see that have come in front of the board and I don't know of any rate increase in ten or even longer than that. Obviously, like everything, our maintenance costs have gone up, our operational costs have gone up. And we are not the same airport, we're not the same Rowan County we were. So there's a very high demand for our airport and our demand supports this rate increase as well.
Last time I mentioned to our guests that I've been part of the airport board, been chair of the airport board, as has Craig Pierce. And I know that we have looked at rates in the past, but that was when the airport director would just pick up the phone and call a few surrounding airports to see how we compared. So I was really happy to see an in-depth official study done by this group. So we're on page two and if you just look at hangar one, current rent is a hundred and seventy-four dollars. The, the needed increase is a hundred and forty-two percent to bring us to market. What the airport director's plan would be, would be to enact a fifty percent increase this year and then twenty-five percent in twenty-four and in twenty-five, and that would bring us up to market. We've talked quite a bit about this with her. I, I told her I would support that, again, having been on the board, seeing how deficient we are in our rates. So the first thing is that we would want to entertain that. So, yeah, so I'll open the floor to any questions or I'll make a motion that we approve the Airport Rent Study Implementation Plan and look for a second.
Second.
All right, then discussion, is there any discussion?
I would just say that, Governor Commissioner, ten years, I don't recall us ever raising the rates. And I'm with Greg, I'm glad that we do it and did it in an official way with this study. And I do appreciate you breaking it up into multiple years instead of hitting them all at once. So I'm fine with this.
Yes, I asked you and I had forgotten your answer. How many years would it take to implement the contracts that we have out there?
Some of them automatically renew, so it could be anywhere from three to five years for some of the other contracts. Larger ones like the Foodline Hangar, RBS, that lease is an extensive lease, so that's one that for over twenty years, we wouldn't be able to make an adjustment on. Like I said, each one of those individual leases, though, will still come back in front of you. It, it won't be an automatic fifty percent for everything. And through the first year, we'll monitor things and if fifty percent turns out to be too much and we see a very negative impact where we can't fill our hangers, then I will come back in front of you and we can make another modification. But we currently have a two-year-long waitlist and majority of the people that have come and spoken to me are not complaining about it. They're in favor and understanding of how the FAA expects us to run and how we need to do this in order to be able to continue to be competitive and ask for funding for things like our hangar expansion and our taxiway hopefully in the future to expand our airport.
Go ahead.
Oh, Mallory, I was just curious as to our surrounding counties, how we compare in rates for hangar rent or lease right now? Do you remember any of those comparisons? But are we like low compared to everybody?
Extremely low.
Okay.
Compared to what we offer. So some of the airports were similar in rates to our grass strips. They're only open part of the year because the rest of the year they're underwater. So we have a unique facility with a runway and we do truly support GA as much as some people feel like the focus has been on corporate. Corporate supports GA and vice versa. So right now, we're doing a larger project that is expanding corporate. But if we can get the airport users to start funding more of the airport versus the board giving more to our operational budget, if we could get half a million dollars back into something, we could save that up over four or five years and build another row or two rows of T-hangers or even use the design with those three box hangers. Take that design and build that off the end of the current ramp. There is still some space for that, but it doesn't make sense, especially if we're not going to charge fair market value. So we can't build something and continue to charge less than public storage space for hangar space.
Thanks.
Well put. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, then all in favor say aye. Aye. All right, any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Is that all you have?
That's the big push. Yep.
Let's see if.
The hard one. The other items were the rules and regulations, minimum standards. Those are very standard documents, nothing outlandish. It's somewhat of a template. Most airports have the same things. Those are two primary management and compliance documents we're required to have in order to get grant funding. And then the Airport Advisory Board bylaws changes.
So all we're, all we're doing tonight is, we wanted to make sure to get the, the rent, put us in a better position on the rent because you have leases coming up July one. But we're not doing any other approvals tonight because those are still under construction.
No, the Airport Advisory Bylaws, the Airport Rules and Regulations Minimum Standards were asked to be approved at the last meeting as well.
Okay.
Pushed to this meeting. They have gone through public comment, they have gone to the Airport Advisory Board. There is a document that was put up with every comment and response to the comment and all edits shown. I have not received any comments on it and all of our tenants to their known email addresses were sent the information about the last meeting and to please come if they did want to have anything in response to it.
Were, were these, were all of these documents, Sarah, were they online for our last meeting? Okay.
They were also posted in the airport terminal building and anyone who wanted to could come review them.
How long was that?
It's in the, I don't have the memo for this meeting in front of me, but it was at least a month that I had them. It went to the Advisory Board and it was extended even two weeks in addition to that. So this whole project has been sixteen months long. It is not something that we skipped any steps in through AMCG and everyone, I feel, had a true timeline where they could respond, where they could come talk to me, where they could directly speak to AMCG if they didn't feel comfortable or talk to any of you if they wanted to. So a lot of our tenants, I think it was at least twelve, had individual interviews across the spectrum. So LFBO tenants, which should change to SASSOs, individual ground lease tenants, prior Advisory Board members, current Advisory Board members, all met independently with AMCG without me present. So they were able to have an unbiased time with them without worrying about what they did or didn't want to say.
Did this, that we just talked about, did that include ground lease?
The ground lease was approved on the consent agenda last time.
Okay.
That lease has a clause in the beginning, it is every five years it can be increased fifteen percent. So the fifteen percent increase is about a dollar twenty-five to a dollar thirty-nine, depending on the size of the hangar. So about thirteen dollars a year at most. The current rates are one hundred and thirty-nine and then one hundred and forty-something, I think. I can't, I don't have them memorized.
You and I talked about a couple of things and I'm, I'll try and we've had a lot happen all already tonight, but one of the things was on ground leases, wasn't it? As those, well, we probably ought to have Jay here to talk with that.
It is something we're working on. As they sell or transfer the ownership of the lease for the ground lease, we're working on some amendments to include with the transfer that further clarify the original lease because the original lease talks about payment for the hangar and some things that are no longer relevant. It refers to us as Rowan County Airport, which just clarifies our name has changed, but it doesn't change your lease. And we're looking at options to consider if there's a possibility of first right to buy it, if someone's willing to let us purchase at the same price that someone was offered to.
One thing I've heard concern about, I wanted to make sure to ask you about, is, you know, if, if I own an airplane, which I don't, and I was renting a hangar out there and someone came to me and said, hey, I saw you taxiing around. I've been looking for an airplane and what you have is exactly what I'd like to have. Would you be willing to sell it? And stuff like that happens quite a bit. Folks are selling airplanes and upgrading, but they typically don't own two airplanes at the same time. They sell an airplane and then they, they enter the market for an upgrade or whatever they're doing. And so I think what, what some of the, a couple of folks that called me were concerned about is if they are leasing a hangar currently from the county and they sell their airplane, but they're looking for a new one. They don't want to give up the hangar if they have plans to, to put a new, newer, maybe bigger airplane in there. So how are we in, in working with the county on making sure that they don't lose their hangar? Is it just a matter of really communicating with you? I, I know, I feel like that if, well, let, let me just open that up to you and see what you have to say.
So for the most part, that would only impact the annual hangars, the ground lease hangers. If they don't have a plane, it could either sit empty or there's a permit that they could use for temporary usage. It wouldn't be subleasing because it's a permit with a specific timeline and we would have all the information of the aircraft that is in there. Part of the problem we've had is different airplanes and different hangers and no accountability, not getting correct COIs, not knowing who the owner is and not knowing where it is. And that's, that's a problem for us as an airport to not know who's in what hangar. For the ground, for the annual lease hangers, right now, forty-five days is what we have set up as an expectation. So if you are the next on the hangar waitlist and you get told, hey, you're on deck, we're going to call you next, you need to be prepared to make your decision. Do you want the hangar or not? We call them, they say, yes, they want the hangar. They can start paying for it and they have forty-five days to bring an airworthy aircraft or set up a maintenance plan for building of an aircraft. I wouldn't call it a hard deadline, but we have to have some level where we can benchmark things because we've had multiple times now where someone takes a hangar and for six months is not using that hangar for an aircraft. It's very upsetting to the people on the waitlist behind them. It doesn't look good for us to be renting out hangers. And part of the reason I truly believe people would do that is our low rates. It doesn't matter to them if they're paying a hundred and thirty-four dollars with an empty hangar. So increasing the rates, I think, is going to help our waitlist, which is also going to help if you don't have a plane and you go to the bottom of the waitlist. If the waitlist isn't two years long, it's six months, it doesn't feel the same pressures to keep the hangar. If someone brings us documents that they are working through a sale and can show us that, we could extend it as well. But a lot of times, it's not an actual aircraft purchase happening. There's some situations where they just want the hangar, but they're not really going to get an aircraft. They may not even have a valid medical at the time. So we, we just have to work through each individual, but have the ability to say after forty-five days in certain situations that I'm sorry that you don't get the hangar, you can go back to the bottom of the waitlist.
Okay.
The other option they have is the open-faced hangers or normally the first available. So if they still want to stay on the list, but they don't have an aircraft yet, but they know now there's, they're close to getting it, they can switch to enclosed and wait, they won't lose their spot, but then they would get an enclosed hangar when it became available instead of completely going to the bottom of the list.
Right. All right, those were my questions. Thank you. All right, anything else you need from us tonight?
Can I ask for the rules and regs, minimum standards and advisory board laws to be approved?
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve those.
Second.
The other discussion? Right, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mallory. Public hearing for road name change, a couple of them. Welcome, welcome. Good to see you. Welcome, welcome. Good to see you.
Yeah, we have, um, and I've got two road name change requests. It's the same neighborhood, Dogwood Estates, which is in the China Grove area. Um, we noticed some errors in the addressing. Um, so, we're renumbering those roads. There was some, um, odd and evens on the same side of the road. Uh, we had one duplicate address. There's two one seventeen Ray Drives. Um, so, in doing that, we noted that in the county, there's probably another eight Dogwoods and there is another Ray. Um, so, we want to go ahead and try to do as much as we can at one time. We don't want to change our numbers today and in two years have to change the street name. So, that's why we are proposing, um, to change Dogwood to Dogwood Estates Drive and Ray from just Ray Drive to Ray Estates Drive. Um, it's a state road that was okay by NC Department of Transportation and also EMS has okayed the names.
So, in the, the write-up, it says the reason for change in come, in the conversion to NG nine-one-one. Could you explain that?
That's not so much the reason for the name change, but that is one of the reasons. They caught the odd even conflict. There's, there were several issues in that same neighborhood. Um, but we know if we have the same name, if we have two Dogwood Drives, and we do. Um, the chances of an error occurring are there. Um, so, we painstakingly went through this neighborhood. We looked at the numbers to make sure there was no numbers near that in the surrounding area. We were trying to do everything we could so we wouldn't have to affect these people again.
And so, for the public, when we have two Dogwood Drives, and someone.
We no longer will issue that, but we do have things in place from many, many years ago that aren't quite the best idea.
Yeah, there were eight.
Hmm? Ray, R-A-Y.
Oh, you didn't say eight Dogwood Drives?
I'm sorry?
There's not eight of them, not eight different.
No, there's dog, there's a, there's several Dogwoods, not eight Dogwood Drives, but it could be Dogwood Drive, Dogwood Circle. Our current guidelines, if we have one Dogwood, anything, you don't get another Dogwood. Okay?
But we've got eight Dogwoods and two Dogwood Drives, right?
Yeah.
And so, if I, if I live on either of these Dogwoods and I'm getting changed, I'm probably not happy about it.
Correct, maybe. It just depends.
Yeah, so, how did you guys, um, determine which Dogwood Drive, uh, got the change?
The determination came because we knew we had to remember it. Or that.
You had, you had to renumber it anyway.
We had to renumber it anyway.
Because.
So, we're trying to be proactive because we know the way nine-one-one's going, um, with the NG nine-one-one. Um, the addresses are becoming more and more important. Um, everybody's going to cell phones, not landlines. Landline used to tell you exactly, you know. So, there's a lot of components in it. Um, so, we wanted to take care of everything at one time.
I hate to keep asking all the questions, but I think it's good for people to hear. Um, you, you said something important, uh, people are going to cell phones instead of landlines. That, I don't, I'm, I'm deducing from that, that if they call from a landline, you can point them.
Now, I'm not the expert on EMS, but yeah.
So, NG nine-one-one is next generation nine-one-one. It came about probably about little over five years ago now. Um, the idea behind next generation nine-one-one was to be able to plot where somebody's at on a map. Not necessarily by their, in, in the past, legacy was if you dial from your house phone, nine-one-one knew where you was at because you had house phone, had address on it, telephone number, everything with that. With the addition of so many cell phones, and now I think it's more like ninety percent cell phones that call nine-one-one than it is ten. It breaks down even that ten percent, even lower from house phones. But, uh, with what we have now, the, the next generation nine-one-one, whenever you call using anything, whether it's a landline or a cell phone, it plots it by AVL location. More than, so, it gets you actually a, a latitude of where the calls coming in at. It's more accurate than it was, still isn't perfect, but it's more accurate than it was. In this situation we have with the Dogwood, hopefully soon to be Dogwood Estates Drive and Ray Estates Drive, where you pulled in, normally you have odd, odds on one side of the road and evens on the other side of the road. Well, when you pulled in Dogwood Drive, it's, uh, it was like, I think, sort of one-ten, then the next one was one-eleven and one-twelve, one-thirteen. It just kept counting up. That, we traced it back probably to the, uh, post office. Third one's is probably, uh, addressed all that before they have any nine-one-one. So, hell on the development's been there. Also, with the NG nine-one-one, something that comes to, uh, Columbus every month is he gets a document from the state that says this area doesn't, is not right. It's odd and even on the same side, or you've got something not addressed on one side, right to the other side, just a lot of things that come about it. Uh, one of the things that we had to do whenever we got, uh, next generation nine-one-one, Columbus had to go in and make all that good and, and tell them we was working on it. So, it's something that happens every month, but we're about ninety-seven percent, we're really good for a lot of other areas in state.
I think, uh, Randy actually went down there and met with the community. This is the one that we had a lot of, um, I guess complaints or concerns about. I don't know if Randy has any.
Oh, I was gonna say, I was gonna say.
Get all this help.
I was the only one that didn't go. I was sick at the moment. Actually, the rest of staff went and met with everybody, so I'll make that clear. So, I was the only one that couldn't be there. Um, but no, uh, all of staff under, under the APA or the address, um, signing committee that reviews all of this.
Randy, you're supposed to take credit when somebody.
No, no, I didn't. No, this was all staff. They, because they met with them. I think they were there for two hours, also had the fire chief, brought everybody together, had the citizens from this community because ultimately when we were looking at it, um, and having everything, this particular neighborhood was honestly, one of the worst numbered, um, out of everything in the county because it kind of started a whole discussion about what do we have? Just to let everybody know, in this process, we've figured out that our own Sloan Park is misnumbered. So, we've submitted that. I think you actually submitted it to, to the county manager. So, it, it's a process that every. No appeals, so, um, but yeah, the, the process was there, uh, worked with everybody. There were two road name changes that came out of this. Um, so, think the process worked exactly as it should. Uh, as raised any concerns? I think that one of the big concerns, we did have a lot of, um, appeals come in. Uh, those were communicated with those citizens about how you make the, the, the changes, uh, and also kind of ease their mind on what that process would be and what the work of the staff is. So, thank you.
I would say at that community meeting, when we walked in there, everybody was totally against it. And I feel like by the time we left, they may not, were happy that it was, that it may happen or needed to happen, but they understood why and they were okay with it.
Anything else?
Nope. And then the same for Ray, Ray Estates and Ray Drive?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, don't go anywhere, hang around. We'll open up the floor for public comment, uh, on either of these road name changes. If anyone wants to speak, then, uh, please, please come join us. All right, seeing or hearing none, then we'll close the public comment period. And we have a motion to approve these two, uh, road name changes. All right, Jim, motion?
Thank.
All right, Mike, second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Mr. Poplin, welcome. Have you learned anything in your classes yet?
I'd say we've learned a little bit.
Yeah? Good, good answer. Yeah, good answer. All right, family subdivision waiver.
All right, we have a request for a family subdivision waiver, oh-two-twenty-three. Uh, the owner of the property is Wendell Boston and the applicant is stepson, uh, Bradley Childers. This is for a lot off of Gray Barn Lane, uh, which is tax parcel two-forty-eight, two-twenty-two. So, this is a, uh, road that's off of Unity Church Road. Uh, this, uh, family subdivision was originally divided into four lots in the early two thousands. And now, they're looking to cut, uh, one-point-five acre tract off to their stepson. But since that's one more than what we can approve administratively, it needs a family subdivision waiver. So, just to kind of see what it looks like. So, all that in blue there was the original family subdivision. Uh, as of today, about twenty years later, it's still all in the family except for lot four. But lot four access is off of a different road besides Gray Barn Lane. So, when evaluating a family subdivision waiver, uh, we have a couple criteria. The first one's the nature of the division. Uh, this is a family subdivision with one new lot for a total of five lots. The existing land use in the vicinity and the surrounding land use is, is mostly residential and agricultural out there. And then the number of people who will reside and work out there. Uh, so, lot one is Wendell Boston. Lot two would be Robert K. Boston. Lot three, Kerry Boston. Lot four is Holly Hankerson. And then lot five would be Bradley Childers. Then the last thing is the, uh, the probable effects on the, uh, traffic in the area. That area, the Gray Barn connects to Unity Church, has thirteen thousand one hundred vehicles a day. And as of, uh, two thousand sixteen, which is the most recent traffic count, there's only about sixteen hundred average trips along that section of Unity Church Road. So, just a couple comments here. Uh, this is only allowing for one extra lot in the family subdivision. And then, uh, they'll still need to meet all the other requirements such as lot size, getting a family subdivision document signed. And then for procedures, just need to approve, deny, or table the request.
We don't need a public hearing, right? All right, is anyone from the family here and wants to? All right. Does everyone get along? We don't want to put you together if you're fighting. Well, here's your, here's your last chance. I'm giving you the last chance. Now, you're good with it? Oh, yeah, you would. Yeah. All right, that's good. All right, thank you. All right, I'll make a motion that we, uh, well, any questions first? I'm sorry. Any questions? Make the motion that we approve family subdivision waiver, FSW oh-two-dash-two-three. All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. All right. All right, you asked for it. Good luck to you. Yeah, good luck to you. All right, Aaron P. oh-two-dash-two-three.
I've been dealing with him and he's been a valuable resource.
Well, good.
Right. So, we had a yeah, permit to exceed oh-two-twenty-three. This is a request from Francisco Castro for a, uh, event at their property at seven-sixty Oak Mountain Road. Uh, they're looking to do a, uh, rodeo with some, uh, with some live music at their, uh, at their property off of seven-sixty Oak Mountain Road. And the date that they're looking to do this is this coming Saturday from eleven AM to eleven PM. So, this isn't the first time they've come to the board. They came to the board back in two thousand and twenty-one, so about two years ago, to do a similar event. Where they had bull riding and some live music. And taking a look at the map here, uh, this property is at the very end of the neighborhood off of Oak Mountain Road. Uh, most of the actual event activities take place on this section of their about fifteen acre property there. Where you got, you can see the bull riding ring right there at the top and then they have their stage and some of their other amenities right there in that corner. And then if you look on the other side of the road is where they'll have the parking and they'll actually keep the bulls themselves, which is noted on the submitted site plan here. So, went out there and we, uh, got some aerial photography. So, we can see here, this is that, uh, northwestern corner of the lot. You can see the bull rings kind of standing up there. You got a couple of portageons. I believe they're going to have some more set out there. They got a making of the stage set up right here. Uh, the most of the property on that side of the tract is covered by forest coverage. And you can kind of see the North Carolina State Farm right out there. The next site here, this is where the parking area has been proposed to be and then where the, for the cows will stay. And you can see right here, it lines up next to the, uh, houses off of Oakview Road. So, I got a couple of the, uh, photos of the vicinity there. So, starting at the top left here, this is, uh, Oak Mountain Road here. This is exiting the site, heading back towards Goodnight Road. So, you e- exit the, uh, property here. You can faintly make out right here, the red roof there. That's the owner's house right there. And then continuing on to the top right photo here, Oak Mountain Road continues back out to, uh, to Goodnight Road there. And then Mountain View Lane is this prop, is this road right back here? You can see there's a number of residential properties that align that road on the bottom two, uh, photos on the slide. So, with looking at a, uh, looking at the criteria for approving a permit to exceed, the first one is the timeliness of the application. Uh, we were given notice this application back on March thirtieth, which is well in advance of today's hearing today on the fifteenth. The nature of the request, this is an event that'll feature bull riding and live music. Uh, previous experience of the applicant, the staff has worked with this applicant one time in the past for their similar event two years ago. The time of the event, uh, this event is, is coming Saturday from eleven AM to eleven PM. Uh, other activities in the vicinity, this is on the same day as the Cheerwine Festival, but, uh, this neighborhood is about ten miles down Mooresville Road from downtown Salisbury. The frequency of the event, the applicant has indicated to us they do want to do more events like this in the future. And incidentally, they have done events like this in the past as well. Uh, at least today, we're only looking at this one event on its own. Any future events, we're going to be looking at either another permit to exceed, potentially doing something like a, uh, temporary use permit or something under the mass gathering ordinance. We're working with, uh, other staff to figure out what the best way is to look at this site in the future, but at least for today, we're just looking at this one event on its own. So, for number seven is the cultural or social benefits. Uh, they're expecting to attract about a hundred fifty people for the effect on adjacent residential area. The attached map at the beginning, you can see there is a lot of residents in the area that kind of butt right up to the property. Number nine is previous violations. Uh, this lot has not had any zoning violations, but it should be said that the, we got this permit to exceed application a couple days after they had an event on this property and received noise complaints. So, then they came to us to, uh, look for a permit to exceed for their next event.
Will you say that again?
So, we got this, uh, we got this application a couple days after they received a noise complaint on this property for a similar event. And then, uh, the criteria ten is that there was adequate notice at least seventy-two hours ahead of time. And the planning department, we mailed out notice on May third to all the adjoining properties. And then we posted signs as well, which is twelve days ahead of today's meeting. So, the, the comment we had was kind of what we, uh, talked about a little bit earlier, that this request today specifically for this event and that future events out there would need to have another consideration. And it may come through a different, uh, view that, such as like a temporary use permit. Uh, it might not specifically be a permit to exceed for any future events out there. And then as far as procedures, uh, you just need to, you can approve, deny, or table the request and then open the floor for public comment. And if you have any questions, both me and the applicant are here today.
Okay. All right, would the applicant like to speak at all? Yeah, come on forward. Welcome. Thank you, thank you for coming.
I'm pretty much the applicant. Um, it's for my dad. He likes doing events like that. It's pretty much, uh, but, uh, there's not many events for like his fat Latinos here in the community. So, we're trying to like, kind of start this up because they have a big rodeo ring in Harmony. I don't know if y'all ever heard of it. We kind of want to start doing that and start bringing in promote motors to come in and start using our land for, you know, such events. Um, we're currently looking into seeing if we get like a beer permit from the county. Um, I know I went over to the office to get an application and they gave me a phone number so we can like, you know, have everything legit as far as permits and. have everything legit as far as permits and, you know, being good with the law enforcement in the area. But as of right now, I mean, we're just doing this for like personal event. We're trying to promote ourselves out to promoters, you know, get people to acknowledge us as a, you know, they're a different place from Harmony to come and see a bull riding and stuff.
So you guys had had another event just recently that wasn't permitted?
Yeah, we had an event recently, we did have a promoter at that, we had rented that out to them. And the police did come out there. We had a, it's not even in our neighborhood really. The person who made a complaint was further down the street because our property, it's kind of like sloped in and the music kind of, I guess, goes towards that direction, like past the forest. And they're usually the ones who get the front of it, but most of the times our speakers, they're facing towards the North Carolina properties. It's not like we're blowing it out towards the, you know, the residents.
You know, we're sort of having these issues crop up in some other areas as well with entertainment type venues. It was all good when folks didn't live, you know, near, but as folks move in, now we're being faced with these issues. So was it, it was a noise complaint, Aaron, that came in?
Yes.
Yeah. So what, what time was the noise complaint?
I can't remember, I wasn't at the event, I was actually at work, but if I had to guess around like eight in the afternoon. Because I mean, most of our events are done by ten or eleven PM at latest, I mean.
The first one was at seven PM, and then the second one was at nine.
Live from the same person? How many acres do you have? Is this your land?
Yes, it's actually belongs to my brother, but he lets my father use it. I'm just the applicant and, you know, his English ain't the best, so I'm over here kind of.
It's all right, ours isn't either. Would you guys be willing to consider a nine o'clock event time?
Nine o'clock?
Done at nine?
Yeah, I think we can stretch to nine. Usually when we do get the noise complaint and, you know, the police come, we, they just tell us to lower it down, we lower it. And usually that's it, they don't have to come out there and, you know, break it up. We haven't had a time of, you know, where they comment, be like, you know, just go ahead and shut it off. By the time they come around, pretty much everybody's already leaving, so.
I mean, we hate, we hate to be the ones kind of telling folks what to do. We just try to encourage compromise, you know, something that we can say to the neighbors, well, we, you know, the, the, the folks who applied for the permit were willing to compromise and keep it at nine o'clock, which is kind of reasonable. You start going to eleven, especially on a Saturday night, you know, it's, it gets to be a bit much for folks. So if, if you guys would be willing to maybe cut off at nine, I think it would make everybody happier.
Yeah.
Let you keep doing your thing until it gets so big that we're back here arguing about it, right? But, but if we could, we could show some compromise, I think everyone would be happy with that.
Yes, that's fine. I think we can do nine o'clock. I mean, I'm sure there's no complaint about that because, I mean, most of the, the, really, the event starts from like three and then, you know, goes forward. That's when the first bull comes out, you know, we just say eleven because, you know, we got early birds, you know, they want to come in, they'll bring horses and we'll let them ride around the property and whatnot, so.
Jim is a former bull rider, so you might get him out there.
Between a bull rider and a bull slinger.
Oh, yeah?
Tell you about that.
Bull, right. Mike, anything?
Okay. If, if you, if you would make sure that, that you work with the speakers, that's the biggest issue that we get on these. It, sound just travels so far. And, you know, we're working with racetracks and all kinds of things, so the, the noise issue, and even if you have this permit, you still have to abide by the decimal readings that we have on that. So if you could do that, that, that would really help.
Yeah, to face the speakers away from the homes, that would be helpful.
And I'd also like to advise you to get more fencing for bulls. I do have experience in chasing bulls. And that's not enough fencing in this picture.
All right, yeah, I mean, we have occasionally, you know, one's gone out looking, already got hurt, but we're working on it. I mean, we just started about two years ago, you know, it's a slow process, but we're getting there. We got most of our acreage, you know, gated in, but we're still working bit by bit.
So is the amplified sound you're going to use, is it music or is it just announcing the action?
Well, well, we got, we got local bands coming in and they'll have amplifiers. And we also have an announcer when the bull ride, it's kind of like a hype man, if you will, like, you know, here comes the so-and-so bull rider, you know, hold on, hold on, you know. So, yeah, we'll have music playing with the announcer, you know, cheering him on.
All right, well, thank, thank you for, for coming up here, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Yeah. The high sheriff?
Concerned, will there be any alcohol sales or beer sales involved here? When we were out the last time, there seemed to be some heavy consumption on the property. I don't know if any was sold there or if it was brought there, but that would be a concern of my office.
Yeah, didn't you say you guys are applying for ABC permit? Travis?
That was just my question, sir.
All right, we'll close the floor of public hearing. All right, any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve P E O two dash two three? All right, motion, I'll second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye. Any opposed? Hey, hey, listen. Just make sure folks are responsible. I mean, it's obviously if you're going to have bull riding, that's, you know, that's a little risky and that's those folks' business. But when they get out on the road, the worst thing we want to hear is approving this and then we've got an accident down the road with a drunk driver. So please, 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 and you guys can be held liable for that. Okay, so please, 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 okay? All right, thank you. All right, Anna, are you next?
Yeah, so we're back to have a second public hearing related to the airport financing. This is because the bids came in higher than expected and we had advertised a price that we were going to finance. And so we need to just make people aware that it's going to be more than we originally thought. So if you have any questions, the information was on the memo or I can talk more specifically about it, whatever.
Didn't the, the finance rates?
It's another item, so. So first we need to have the public hearing and approve the findings resolution. And then we move those other two items to after that, so.
All right, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. We're going to have on the findings resolution for installment financing for airport construction. Anyone want to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing and.
No, you just need to adopt that resolution.
All right, make a motion, we adopt the findings resolution for installment financing for airport hangars. Second, all right, all in favor, say aye, aye. We'll move on to the next item.
The next item is actually approving for us to start the contract process with KMD Construction. Craig's here, if you have any questions regarding that particular contract, but those bids came in at not to exceed seventeen thousand, three hun, I mean seventeen million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars for that particular piece of the project.
Good to see a local company won this bid, Dollar Stan in Rowan County. Make a motion to approve an award, the corporate box hanger project to KMD Construction. All right, all in favor, say aye, aye. And then airport financing?
Yes, so the final piece is to approve the award of the financing to JP Morgan Bank. Bids were attached there, let me see if I can. The rate, um, we will have to get with them to get the full contract, but the rate that they, that we have for the taxable portion is four point three nine. And then for the tax exempt portion is three point six two. And that's based on what the hangers being used for.
Yeah, so the
We have to split that out.
Public safety hangers would have a rate of three point six two and the corporate hangers four point nine, three nine, four point three nine. All right. Let's see. Make, I make a motion that we accept the bid offers from JP Morgan. Second, all in favor, say aye. All right, Anna?
Great, so moving on to my financial reports.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
When we, I'm not really, when we do this from a county government standpoint, in the future, if rates go back down, we can redo the.
So in this particular case, we chose not to do that. We made it non-callable because of the fee that it was, I mean, it wasn't really going to save us anything probably because we would be so far in that the fee was going to be more to reduce the rate than it would be to leave it where it's at. Yeah, so we weighed that in our decision of what we were going with. Great. And all of those are contingent on the LGC's approval on the, in the sixth, and we should have all contracts back to you on the fifth or your final review. So now looking at the financial reports. The first one is our cumulative expenditures. We are up five point two percent over FY twenty-two or six point five million dollars. Next is, the questions next is cumulative revenue. They're up thirty-three point nine million or twenty-four point two percent. Ten million in ARPA and eight million in the loan proceeds are in that number. We have a million in lottery funds and there's a few other larger items from some fees and stuff, but those were the main ones that stood out when I looked at why we're up so much. Moving on to cumulative property tax. Yeah.
Go back to the slide.
Yeah.
Thirty-four million dollars. It comes from?
I'll do some more looking into what's made it so much higher. But I know we have the ten million in the ARPA funds in there, so that's a pretty big chunk of money. And eight million in loan proceeds that we got when we financed the radios for the communications for the whole county. So those proceeds are in there because we haven't made that payment yet. But those proceeds would still be in there either way, but the expense hasn't technically hit on the expenditure side.
You know, Jim raises a good question. In the, we haven't asked you to do this before, but it'd be helpful for us, but also for the public when we're going through these, is even if you go back to the first slide, which is expenditures, it, if we're up seven million dollars, it's, it's, a lot of times it's because of something.
Right.
Not just spending, but there's some big ticket thing that is causing that. And so in the future, would you kind of lead us through that and let us know? And then on the next slide, yeah, there, Jim raises a good point, there's a thirty-four million dollar difference. Well, we can look at that and say, wow, we got thirty-four million dollars more coming through. No, we don't. We have, there's a big explanation for that. And so go on to the next slide.
I can definitely have that for next time, yeah. So then on the property tax, we've collected three point two million more than last year at this point, which is through March, which is three point seven two percent. On sales tax, cumulative, we've collected two point six million dollars more, which is approximately twelve point five eight percent. Both of those are in those cumulative revenues also.
It's never going to end.
And then when you look at the monthly sales tax, and that's just through January, so I keep waiting for it to, you know, slow down. But when you look at this month over month, it's still up quite a bit from the previous year, so. So these are up three hundred and sixty-nine thousand or twelve point five percent over last January. Had that one month that was flat, but other than that, they stayed up. Yeah, I can definitely look into a little more detail over why, you know, why those are up and if they're one-time items or things that should continue.
All right, the big, the big question, any red flags for us other than impending world doom? Take that as a no. It's all right. All right, Aaron. The thing we, the thing we've all been waiting for. Randy, do you have it ready?
Okay, this is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four budget presentation, next page. The budget is balanced and prepared in accordance with the local government budget fiscal control act. The recommended budget with all the funds is two hundred and forty-two million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. It's for the As you see, the general fund is the largest portion of it, and that's the fund we normally talk about. Some of this is passed through, some of it is like that, the land, landfill, airport, water fund. The next slide. So the general fund budget, which is where most of the governmental activities take place, the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty-three was one hundred eighty-seven million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. This year, the request came in at two hundred and forty-five million, four hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. The recommended budget is a hundred and ninety-eight million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So there is approximately forty-seven thousand million that was not recommended to be funded in this budget. That's, that is a five point six percent increase from this year's budget.
So, so forty, what's, two forty-five minus one eighty-seven? It's fifty-eight million and we went up roughly ten and a half.
Yeah, so it's forty, that's forty-eight or forty-seven million that, that wasn't, that is not recommended, that was requested.
If we approved all of that, about eighty cents. An eight cent increase?
I think it was eighty-three, eighty-four, and I did the math, but it's hard to do with the revalue.
Eighty-three or eighty-four?
I think that's what we
I think that's what we figured, but it's kind of confusing if you take into the, not reva, the revenue neutral number. I think that's what we figured, but it, it's kind of confusing if you take into the uh, not reva- uh, the revenue neutral number, but yeah. It's, it's, it's a lot. Figured it probably wasn't worth mentioning. So the um.
Well, hold on, it, it is worth, um, whether we can figure out the number or not.
I figured out.
It, well. The, the point is, we've got about forty-five million dollars in requests over what the budget is. And so we're going to have department directors that aren't happy.
Yeah, they're out here in the audience.
Okay. They're all, they're all here tonight.
Raise your hand if you're not happy.
See, see, so if we did approve all the requests, then um. It wasn't at, uh, let's see, forty-five, forty-five million. Wasn't it one point eight million divided by one eight hundred? Uh, is about a twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five cents.
Twenty-five cent tax difference.
So you add that on the, the sixty-five, so that would be ninety, and then the tax cut recommended is about seven, so subtract seven from. We're at eighty-three, yeah.
Yeah, eighty-three, about eighty-three cents, okay.
And if anybody is not confused over this conversation. We will have a little class up here right after this.
I'm sorry.
No, it would, yeah, if we funded all that, it would be a lot of, lot, be a huge burden on the taxpayer. So the current tax rate is sixty-five point seventy-five cents. Uh, the revenue neutral. Estimated tax rate that we calculated is fifty-two. Point fifty-nine cents. And the recommended tax rate is fifty-eight cents, so it's, it's about a seven and a half to eight, eight, eight cent tax cut. So the, the um, calculation. Uh, the chairman was just doing, the, the new property tax base with the revow and the growth we've had is eighteen. Uh, point seven billion, so if you take the zeros, take enough zeros off that, you end up with a penny on the tax rate. Is approximately uh, one point eight seven million per penny, so that's what the chairman was doing, he was. He took the forty-five million that, that was, is not being recommended and divided it by uh, one point eight, which got you to close to ninety cents. That's a thirty-one uh, point seven five percent increased over last year's values, and that's based on a collection rate of ninety-eight percent. Uh, the sales tax. Uh, that we're projecting is a one point nine million dollar increase, which is about five percent from last year's. Budgeted amount. But it's, it's based on, it's based on the actual amount we've received, so. Um, it's really, we're not projecting any increase, uh, well, it is an increase on budget, but not an increase on actual, so. It's kind of a flat sales tax projections, which hopefully will give us room for a very mild recession, not a big one, next slide. So the fund balance appropriation, that's the amount of money out of our savings account that we use to balance the budget uh, annually. Twenty-three, it was nine point three million, this year it's ten point nine million, it's a very, very low amount either way, so it's somewhat insignificant. Uh, amount of, you know, difference. Um, in comparison to the overall size of our budget, and, and a lot of that is restricted. And next slide, please. So this, this budget recommends a cost of living adjustment of two percent in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, which would be effective July first for employees, and then another two percent effective in two thousand twenty-four. Which would be effective January first. Next slide, please. So the, the um, one-time expenditure highlights. That really, these, these all pretty much. We can't really put off any, any longer, but um, the agriculture center roof um, is leaking. And if you're in the conference room there, you can see where it's leaking. Uh, the information technology storage is a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and Randy asked for more than that, but. This is the absolute bare minimum that we need for that. The tennis courts at our flagship park, Dan Nicholas, um, they are, are in really bad shape. They're to the point to where if they're not repaired, we probably need to close them. Uh, the playground at Dan Nicholas Park. Is in, is in fairly bad shape, and um, it, it needs to be replaced as well. The library carpet at the South Branch, we've got a grant budget of the revenue in this budget, and then the. Transit scheduling software, eighty percent grant funds will pay for that, so about one point seven million in, in one-time capital expenditures. Next slide, so vehicles. Uh, this budget recommends thirty-six. New vehicles, kind of sort of emergency services is one, one, um, one brand-new ambulance and three uh, remounts. So you take the, the box that was on another vehicle, get a new vehicle and put that box on that, uh, on the, on the new vehicle. So it's, it's, it's eight new, well, it is eight new vehicles, but three of them won't have new. Three of them will have the older boxes we have. Uh, inspections is two vehicles, animal services one. Uh, transit is one point, I mean fourteen. Uh, that's one point three million, and the sheriff is fifteen, seven hundred and thirty thousand. So the total cost of vehicles is three million, but with the transit. The, the large portion of that is paid with federal grant dollars, if, if, is it, is it all? Ninety, ten. And the um, the sheriff and emergency services. Uh, will use the quarter cent public safety sales tax for those, next page. So there were a, uh, there was, there was a request for a hundred and two new positions. That cost would have been four million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, and that um. You know, that would, does a lot of new positions. Um, the budget recommends, so let's just, we, we'll talk about income, Kate, we'll talk about social services last. The budget really recommends uh, three new positions, that's the school resource officer. Uh, which is going to, is being paid for by faith, deputy registered deeds, we hope to be paid for through um. The duties that job will be performing. And the project manager engineer, which half will be in landfill and half. Will be used for our ADA compliance, which I'll talk about that on another slide, so those are really the three new positions. The only one where really county money will be used will be about seventy-five thou- well. Property tax dollars will be used would be seventy-five thousand dollars from the project manager engineer position. The other seventy-five would come from the landfill fund, so we're going to revisit that position in the next slide. The income maintenance caseworker too. We have five in there right now and one supervisor, this is for the Medicaid expansion. Five may do it, it may require twenty-five. We just don't know. Um, uh, Siobhan went and met with them, we think five, six, seven will work. But it may not, and we still don't understand the funding mechanism, even though we've used the, the normal funding. Um, reimbursement for these, we don't know how the state's going to reimburse, reimburse the county for Medicaid expansion. So this is kind of a placeholder, may go up, may, may go down around December, January, when this, if it gets rolled out by then. Um, so, you know, that's just kind of a guess, but if this budget's approved, that, you know, we would expect they go ahead. And do their best to hire five new um, maintenance, I mean uh, income case maintenance workers and a supervisor. Next slide. So this is just a, a, a quick note about the Article forty-six sales tax that we use for public safety. This budget includes six point seven million dollars in Article forty-six sales tax. This is based on, we're projecting four million in new revenue. There's currently a three point six million uh, estimated balance, and. If, if you take that, then we, and subtract that, or subtract the six point seven million, we, we're projecting there'll be eight hundred and ninety-four. That, close to nine hundred thousand dollars remaining in Article forty-six sales tax. Um, reserve, next slide. So, um.
Can I stop you there?
Yes, sir.
We didn't have that fund. Uh, that's another three point seven five cents on the tax roll, and that's not fair to say. Uh, that's if we paid for it in a year.
Yeah, well, we use that for debt service on radios for all the fire department, so yeah, it's, I mean. It's very important.
Yeah.
So the ADA transition plan, um. This is mandated by federal law uh, through the American Disabilities Act. We completed a study, and, and y'all may remember, we had a presentation over a year ago that provided uh, needed improvements for county sites. One example I can point to is in this building, the doorknobs. Um, everybody can look back at that doorknob, it is round, it needs to be a lever in order to be compliant with federal law. So with the, the side evaluation and transition plan, um, which shows that we, we're making a effort to become in complete. Um, compliance with the ADA within ten years, is estimated to cost about six point one million dollars. Don, those doorknobs are what, twenty-eight thousand? Just in this building? Yeah, so that gives you an idea of the top of things that's in that six million, and it, there, it's, it's not optional, I mean, it, it's something. That has to be done, um, so that's where that position, project manager engineer, for the next ten years. That position will manage this process. Um, so, I mean, we probably will use at different times if required by statute, in, you know, a architect, if, if something has to be rebuilt, but we're hoping this position. Will, will save, we won't have to go out for RFP all the time. Um, we also budgeted six hundred thousand dollars. Um, in, in the budget to spend this upcoming year on things like doorknobs. Um, to be in compliance with federal law.
Are we, are we going to auction off the old doorknobs?
We have, we can take that under advisement.
Don, do you need any?
We put it on Gov deals.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah, bet they are. All right.
Well, they're on the doors. Yeah, I mean, they're, they're nice doorknobs, they work fine, they're just not, um, the lever. Uh, next page, please. So the, this is the uh, school funding. The first one is Rowan Salisbury um, community col- I mean, the Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And it looks like there's an eighteen percent decrease, it's actually a two hundred percent increase, they owe us a million dollars that we loaned them last year for architect fees, so. Instead of payment plans, we went ahead and uh, included it in the budget recommendation. And I've, I've talked to Dr. Spaulding about that, and, and, and she's aware of that recommendation. Uh, Rowan Salisbury School System, Kannapolis and Charter Schools. How we came up with this funding is we did a five percent per pupil appropriation, so. We make sure they're all treated the same, and a five percent per pupil appropriation gives three point six eight percent increase. Now, this is just for operating and cap and one-time, and current capital uh, is an increase of one point four million. Uh, for the Rowan Salisbury schools, Kannapolis is a decrease in one thousand eight hundred and sixty-two, which, I mean, their, their student population is going down. And then the charter schools is eight point seven one percent increase. So. It's total, but it, you, you really need to take RCC out of that, so on top of this. This budget also has in it over four million dollars. For debt service for the um. Uh, let me give you the exact amount. Was, there's, it's, it's over eight million. But there's four million. Okay, so Rowan Salisbury schools. We have four point nine million. In there, which is an increase of over a million, two or three hundred, four, three or four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, for debt service to provide for a fifty-five million dollar school, okay? So that's four point nine million, that's also in the budget, that is not on this sheet. Um, so for example, the total amount of funding for Rowan, Rowan Salisbury School. In twenty-three was forty-one million, three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and fourteen. That includes current operating, current capital and debt service. Their new number uh, with this new debt service, or the debt service number increased over last year. For current operating capital and debt service is forty-four million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. So there is enough. I- in this budget to cover the debt service for the fifty-five million dollar school, that is a forty-four, one, five, nine. Two, one, seven, minus. That's a, almost a two point uh, seven, two, two point seven million dollar increase for Rowan Salisbury schools, if you include the debt service. Then for Rowan Cabarrus Community College. We've got four million, eighteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars, which will cover two semi-annual debt payments. That was a, approved in the bond referendum. Um, if you recall, I believe the, the discussion was a three cent taxing increase for that, so if you take the. Um, recommended tax rate of fifty-eight cents and you were not raising taxes, then it would really be more like fifty-five cents. With this, so that would be, you know, two and a half cents over uh, the revenue neutral rate. So combined, um, the funding for debt service is close to nine million dollars in this budget. If you go back, well, that, because some of this is already in there, so that's not a good comparison, but at any rate. There's quite a bit of funding going to the schools um, in this budget. Um, next slide, questions?
And you say there's nine million dollars in there to the schools. How mu- can we direct that money and require that money be paid that way, or is all of it just given to them and then they decide how to spend?
So of the four point nine million, that goes to debt service, unless they didn't, if they wanted to reduce the cost to, to forty million. We would reduce the debt service costs and that could go into their operating, but in there, uh, can you go back one slide, please? Um, in their operating amount, the thirty-nine million, six hundred and thirty-four, eight hundred and twenty-six, we don't really, we don't. Direct them on how to spend that, so that's nearly forty million dollars that the school has discretion with on how they want to spend that money. We, we, you know, we don't um. We, we don't, we can't legally tell them, there is a, there is a, there is another type of budgeting you can do that gets down to, I can't remember if it's called funk, it's not function, but it's. They have certain codes, um, you can budget, but we don't do it that way, we give them a flat amount. Well, this is an estimated amount, if sales tax goes up, they'll get more, if it goes down, they'll get less, but, you know, they can spend that how they want, so that. The one point four million dollar increase, the school system can spend that however they want to, it's, it's up to their discretion. They're probably a lot like us, I mean, there's not a whole lot discretionary spending.
So the plan is, um, I think in our.
Carol Hearn, and raised her hand.
In our consent agenda, we scheduled a public hearing for the proposed budget. Uh, for our next meeting, correct?
Yes, sir. It is the next, no, no, is the public hearing is the next meeting.
I put it for the nineteenth, because that's how you've done it in the past, so I did the public hearing at the next. Evening meeting.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, uh.
Because that's how it was done last year. So I said, that's okay. I just want to make sure. Yeah.
Um, I said schedule a public hearing, didn't say what date, but I believe you.
Did you say someone had a question?
May have been a mistake because it just, it looked like on the Zoom, somebody raised their hand.
Yeah, sure. Hey. All right. I think that's all of it. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion?
So moved.
Second. Anything from you? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, thank you.